All right, our first accessory dwelling unit amendments.
Thank you very much. I'm gonna try to speed through this since I'm getting a little late start. But this is just an introduction to the codes that we are anticipating changing. To align with state law requirements. First, they're just a little verb here, what are ADUs? They're small self-contained residential units located on the same block as an existing SFR. They have independent living facilities such as a kitchen, sleeping area, and bathroom allowed for independent living. This shows with the little diagram, this is courtesy of the Chamber of Commerce, different ways you can have established your ADU within, it can be attached or. I did, this is kind of separate from the code changes, but I wanted to share this with you. So in a five-year span, I didn't include this year because we don't have four-year data. We've issued a total of sixty-seven ADU permits, which is pretty awesome. You can see we've kind of spiked in nineteen and that when we had those two big developments up near Pine Grass. So a lot of those do have interior ADUs, so you can't tell, it looks like a house, but they're actually two dwelling units on some of those lots. And we also sent a survey out to all our ADU owners. And we did get, we sent eighty-four surveys out. We got thirty-seven responses, not too bad, considering they had to like mail it in. They, of those thirty-seven, forty-nine were attached, fifty-one percent were detached. So it's pretty split fifty-fifty as far as how they were configured. A majority of them, fifty-seven percent are a one-bedroom, which is great. We don't have a lot of that as an option for like how, actual housing. Two, twenty-two percent were two-bed, twenty-two percent were studio. And then it just broke down, like if they rent, fifty-seven percent rented out, thirteen percent lived in their ADU, rent out their primary. Eight percent of those ADUs are just unoccupied. And then twenty-two percent was like other, I think that was more like, I use it as an office or wouldn't let them at them. And then this little thing down there is just showing fourteen percent of those that were surveyed, that we received surveys back from. Fourteen percent were the entities that were registered and booked. But fifty-four percent of them were long-term rentals, so that's promising. That over half of those that we committed are long-term rentals. Some are just used for guests, some are in that other category, I don't know. And then another moth with the eight percent. That's already getting us behind. So this is just a slideshow of the statute for requirements for ADUs per household thirteen thirty-seven, that was drafted in twenty twenty-three. We're required to adopt this by the end of next year. We're choosing to push it forward to address more affordable housing options. Other communities have done the same. So I was just gonna dig into kind of what the changes are. And this is already adopted by the planning commission through a public hearing process. Those of you who are with us at the joint session, you've heard a lot of this already, so thanks for your patience. All right, well, this is something weird, but this is the next slide. I just, I'm kind of going through the red lines real quick. We removed and outdated definition for ADU. Now it's going to align with state law and we're gonna put it in our actual definition section of the code. So that's what that came. And the next change is the number of units. As you know, we currently allow one ADU per lot, this would allow up to two ADUs per lot. In accordance with the state law, again, we're mandated to adopt this by the end of next year. This was just, it's, we recommended as part of the docket this year to look at, that quickly forward this year. I already kind of discussed this, but this is just clarifying how the units can be permitted and what configurations. So it's very clear as outlined in, in sweet law there as well. This was, this is one section that we might need to dig a little deeper on, but we're looking at off-street parking. So currently, the code requires a single-family residence, if it's fifteen hundred square feet or less, it only needs one parking space. Once you go over that fifteen hundred square feet, we need to provide two off-street parking spaces. So currently, if I had a house and let's say we adopted this and I, I have two ADUs and my home was sixteen hundred square feet. I'd have to have two spaces for my house plus one, plus one, so a total of four. The way the code is drafted, and this was recommended by the planning commission, is that regardless of the size of the primary home, if you're gonna provide two ADUs, you only need one space for your home. I know we have a parking problem, so this is a little, this will be a discussion topic. I think we're just looking at it as providing additional housing options and maybe you build that ADU and it's for your typical college, maybe it's for somebody that doesn't have a car. You just have to build that into how, how you decide to rent them. But we just didn't want a barrier to allowing that second ADU. And so this was offered some of us though. Five more minutes. We decided to clarify gross floor area so that it, to clearly define that it, we call it an inter-applicable area. It includes basements and attics, but it excludes the stairs, the garage, and the unheated storage areas. I think it's, it's helpful when things are clear. So if there's any clarification you think we need there, I'd love feedback. This is state law requirement that, so we had in our code that you could only, we have some limitations with existing structure that were non-conform. Now, this just flat out allows you to convert an existing structure even if it is non-conforming due to setbacks or lot coverage. So an example, the house that's maybe three feet per side, garage, it's maybe three feet off the rear, rear yard. Could you convert it into a home, even though it doesn't conform to our current standards? Yeah.
So on that note, I forget what the standards are, but right now, if you say you have an old house and you wanna remodel it and you do a certain percentage of the home, that triggers bringing the whole home up to code, correct?
Yeah, there are.
So in this case, that.
That one wouldn't know there, yeah. It's saying you can convert it if it's an existing structure. I think we do need to look at our non-conformant code. There are some limitations in it that have come up and what's another thing we've talked about with planning mission. But the way the state law is mandating is just saying if you have an old garage, you can, still has to be building code. So it says, if it's breathing in the pipeline, it has to have that fire at all.
Okay, that was my last question.
Yeah, so it'll still have to be building code, so they can't be building code, can't convert it. But this is just saying from a zoning perspective, if you overlook that, or anything like that, that it is sort of, hopefully structure value there. Just changing the use. Sections F G and H of the new code talk about, F we kind of covered, do you allow condos? We allow you in a lot subdivision, so this just stating that ADUs could be sold off from the primary residence in accordance with Title seventeen. G talks about road improvements not being required as a condition of permitting. We have in title D, a section that allows us to waive requirements for infill development. So we constantly do that where if a road up doesn't have sidewalks, we're not gonna make some put in, but tiny sections sidewalk. When they're building an ADU or even their house for that matter right now. So this is just, again, a state law requirement saying we can't mandate any kind of road improvements if you wanna build an ADU or two ADUs in a backyard. And then H is another requirement, a state requirement, but off-street parking is not required if you want an ADU that's located within a half a mile, walking distance of a major transit stop. Currently, we don't have major transit stop defined, so as you'll see in your packet, we do have some new definitions that we're adopting that are compliant with state law. We currently do not have anything that makes the definition of a major transit stop. But this code language is in here, so if we ever did, then we wouldn't have that a half mile. This is another big one, and I'll try to bring it up. Lot coverage increase, this was something the planning commission was pretty passionate about because of the small lots and the desire to try to find ways to get this info and allow for that second ADU. And again, they're small. By kind of, by increasing the lot coverage. So currently, we would apply the, whatever the required lot coverage is for the primary parcel, sorry, primary dwelling unit. And I gave an example here, so if you had, if you're in the RL system, which the majority of the residences are, you have a thirty-five percent lot coverage, so when you build your house, you're thirty-five percent. The way they have it drafted is that you can increase by five percent for each additional dwelling unit. So if I wanted to buy a home and now I wanna build one ADU, I can go up to a forty percent lot coverage. If I wanna build two ADUs, I can go up to a forty-five percent lot coverage. And that sounds like a lot, when you look at the typical lot coverage for a six thousand square foot lot. Thirty-five percent is twenty-one hundred square feet of lot cover. That includes everything that's under ADU, that's not through pavement, that does not include uncovered depths, things like that. But that is our maximum right now, twenty-one hundred square feet. If you were to increase it by that five percent over ADU, you're increasing it by three hundred square feet. That's the same as like some sheds that are allowed to be two hundred square feet or less. So it really, we're more looking at footprint. And then if you added your second ADU, it'll give you another three hundred square feet. But really, the grand scheme of things isn't a huge amount, but it, it can be triggering. So if there's any way, if you want me to give some examples, like here's a lot in whatever subdivision. Here's, I mean, I can give you an example of what that might look like, if that would help. I always think the visuals help, but this is kind of the big, the big thing that the planning commission was pushing, just wanting to get some flexibility, so people will build lots that will be smaller.
So the planning commission did, they're pushing this, this is the state.
This, this one is not a state requirement.
It's not, okay.
The ones I've kind of pulled out are the parking. And then the lot coverage. This is something that they thought would be helpful because it's a barrier to being able to. So this one is not mandated, and that's why I wanted to specifically call it out. So this is something that I feel like absolutely not. I'd love to have that information before I decide to bring it to a public hearing. That's why we're talking about it here in this session with this, in a, in a hearing.
I, I like it, and I do see maybe discrepancy in the wording because under the Leavenworth Code, the red line document under I, it says the maximum lot coverage required by the underlying zoning district shall apply to the single-family residence and the first accessory dwelling unit on the lot.
We did change that. Sorry, that was changed after the hearing and that is my fault for not updating these slides.
So we're going a five, five percent, five percent, we're not just by.
Sorry, that was a change of the hearing that they asked for and that is my mistake. The burden you will get is actually five percent, five percent. Thank you for clarifying that. And then, and that was, this is a, this is a mandate, so fifty, impacted for ADU are limited to no more than fifty. Fifty percent of those assessed for the principal housing unit. Currently, we do not have impact, so impact fees are those that are for infrastructure. We have not adopted impact, we have system development charges. And they're two separate things. So the way state law drafted, they would still pay the same system development charges unless you as a council want me to also include with this, impact fees and system development charges. So there are some jurisdictions that have done that. Reducing that amount of the cost per hookups. Currently though, we already don't require connection fees, so if you build a small unit, it's nine hundred square feet or less. So I think we're kind of meeting the intent of this as our code is drafted now. But again, this doesn't impact us at all because we don't have impact because of this component type, but we could and that's why we have this in there. And then last slide is just for adding some new definitions for dwelling unit or updating and adding dwelling unit ADU, attached ADU, detached ADU, short-term rental needed some tweaking, principal unit and major transit stop, and those are all in your packet and should be for correct versions. That is all that pretty. I'm sorry, it took a little longer, we got started a little late, but hopefully we'll talk on that. So I appreciate you listening. And if you wanna reach out to me with any questions individually, I'm happy to answer those. I know we kind of got a chance to talk, but I just wanted to knock this out here. Would love your feedback, so if you could email me, I would love, love, love it before I bring it to you then. Thank you.
We're gonna have time for questions on this tonight or not?
Well, she was hoping.
We're hoping, but we, we're running a little.
Well, she was hoping that you could get them, if you've got the questions, you could get them to her and she could answer.
The one question I would have is, we don't have major transit stops, right? So does that mean that each ADU does have to have a parking, off-street parking?
And that's why they did reduce the required two if, for the main home, if it would have required two. And they're adding two others, then it would be a total of three versus four. That's where the parking issue came in, but not, not no parking.
So there's no ADU built without an off-street parking, Jason? Okay, I think that's really important.
Yeah, that, that one, the major transit stop was only if, if we had one for one and then do a next half-mile walk distance of that thing. So, so not a lot of places that apply. If, if our, like, location ever qualified as a major transit, not a lot of plans.
So let her know if you've got issues before we bring it to public hearing. The next item is to discuss a potential funding stream for some affordable housing. As you know, this has been a top priority for this council for many, many years. A top one for me is I've fought to get a separate dedicated housing fund from our legislature and get closer and closer, but we're still without a direct one for housing. But what we do have is the potential to use an existing stream of funding for affordable housing. And again, this is our lodging tax. But the disadvantage, again, it's not a new tax, it's taken existing tax. But the other two things are, it's not as flexible as the ones we've been going for that would allow us to use direct. I mean, this is limited to issuing bonds and get paid back from lodging tax revenue. So that's both a plus and a minus. It's, it's a minus in that you're not able to deal with just dollars to dollars what, in a funding stream. But on the plus side, you know, you bond for something, you know, you've got a fifty thousand dollar payment. You know, out of a four million dollar lodging tax for a million dollar a bond, right? So it potential is to get kind of some bang for your buck. And, and again, I know it's not popular with everyone that would like to see it, but as I told the downtown steering committee today. You know, we do generate enough, it's not, it's not gonna take away from investing in the downtown and the project there. You know, we do, we have many needs as, as a city and one of them is, you know, housing. And like I say, if we don't address that as well as the business community, you end up going the way that a lot of mountain towns do where they don't have a community left. So it's trying to do all of those things in balance. And here's one way that I think we could address it. The other thing that I don't like about it, I mean, it addresses one segment of our need for housing, workforce housing. But it doesn't go high enough. It's limited to eighty percent of median income or below. Which, let's face it, we need that too, but we also need, you know, some funding that would go higher and, you know, other places, other things that we've been trying to get that would allow us to go to one-twenty. But this, you know, so what we're just trying to see is if there, is there an appetite to go ahead and, and move this direction and then get at least a start? You know, there's, there's some feeling like, you know, this could actually help us to, to move things along, to get a new funding stream as well, you know? So, you know, the housing, we've got a housing subcommittee they've been working on. What they wanna do is throw out, you know, to get some proposals, what could, what would you do if, you know? But that's really hard if you can't offer, you know, some significant dollars to be able to say, you know, the city can contribute up to, you know, a certain amount. So, you know, we're just trying to get a feel for whether we can look at going that direction, bringing something. First of all, I mean, this doesn't say how much, it doesn't say, you know, we don't have a project, but what it would do is give us the potential, like I said, when we look for projects to say, and the city will be able to, to get something and put something into it. And then again, as I've said over and over again, without having dollars to bring to the table, we're competing with everybody else that wants that housing. And until we bring dollars to the table and say, this is for our community, this is for our permanent residents. It's not second homes, it's not, you know, and the only way I know that we can do that is to bring some dollars to that table, so I would like to hear what your thoughts are.
I'm gonna preface my comments with, this has nothing to do with me disliking our ability to create affordable housing. I absolutely support creating affordable housing options. But I don't believe that this is the path for us. I don't, I don't agree with taking money from one fund to create another opportunity. I don't think that this directly addresses the issue. And I think we should still continue pursuing at the legislature level, figuring out funding directly for our affordable housing issues in our community and in our state. We have a lot of projects downtown that we are gonna need to fund. And those projects will play out in a much longer drawn-out schedule and be less aligned if we start taking money out of the fund that will be exclusively funding it. So I don't, I don't particularly support this affordable housing funding opportunity with lodging tax.
I would agree with Anne. Although, I guess, I said questions, we, we've been talking about this for a while and being different communications, meaning for a year, it's come up, this is your, your big thing. It's almost this ten-thousand-foot view, I'm not sure how many, I know this is another tool for us, and I'm all about the tools that we've, we've created. But I, I don't, I agree with Anne, I mean, just what Anne said, I think that there's, just grabbing from this from the, our lodging tax to, to create for housing to, to give us that opportunity, I don't think it will create that much more opportunity, to be honest. From what I, from what I understand. I think the glaring problem is the forty percent of unattained by homes. I mean, there's just that snake right in front of us, if we really wanna take a hard look at stuff, there's, I don't think we've spent enough time kind of developing opportunities to, to manage some of that. And that's a better opportunity as it relates directly to housing versus Robin Peter, PayPal. As we are, this huge project coming on Front Street and other things in town. You know, chamber is so important, all that tourism is our lifeline to this, to everything, right? Because we thrive on that, like to our sheriff's contract is, doesn't even, our income tax, our property taxes don't include our sheriff's contract. Some of those things, it is important for us.
I think that, I think it should be a very good look at, really, guys, we've got two legal opinions here. It says this would work, right? And as far as property, the second home thing. Travis, that's just, that's a state legislature thing, we're not gonna budge that needle for a long time, from my, my opinion, just this. It's what they've got, it's in the state constitution. This is in front of us, I think if we, I think if we look at the amount you take, you're gonna pay it back, so it's not gone forever. It isn't like you're taking Robin Peter to PayPal because you're gonna pay it back anyway. So it just allows you to borrow, sell the bonds and then pay them back. I mean, so I don't, I don't see that as a threat to downtown's projects myself.
I think you had a better understanding, to your point, I think I need a better understanding.
Okay.
Yeah, my, my concern is not understanding of the structure of bonds. I don't like the idea of, of taking and getting a thirty-year loan, say, whether it's a million bucks or five hundred thousand dollars, and then we're paying that back for thirty years. Meantime, we have needs continue to, to grow and need to be met. So can we keep doing this or can we structure the payoff period to be quicker? So that we can reuse that money? That's the kind of stuff I would like to know more about. But as far as the, you know, the lodging tax being related to affordable housing, I mean, absolutely are related. And that's, I think, the legal opinions establish that they, they concur with that as well. You know, our success also comes at a cost. So it is our lifeline, the tourism, and if somebody who pays into the lodging tax, I, I'm concerned about where that money goes. But I, but I think that not addressing housing in conjunction with our, our success is, is a mistake. And I'd love to be able to see where this can go and utilize that, but the funds, if it's appropriate to do so, which seems like.
I think my appetite to discuss this really revolves around the numbers that are involved. And I know that, you know, your thought is, well, let's just talk about the general idea of it. Well, for me, that's akin to saying, going to my family and saying, let's talk about the general idea of buying a car. Like, okay, are we gonna, are we gonna buy an Escort? Are we gonna buy a Bronco Plus? Are we gonna buy a Maserati? Like, that substantively changes the tone of the conversation. So I would need to know, I guess, more details as far as what kind of, what kind of dollars it would take to move the needle on this? Because our, we do have needs downtown and ongoing and into the future. And I think it's hard to have a substantive conversation about this without really knowing what numbers we're dealing with about here. And then also, I think, looking at it thirty thousand foot, you know, when I'm thinking about what might move the needle, I'm always thinking about best for the most. And I think long-term ownership is an important ideal, it is an essential ideal. But what is ideal for this community that we're dealing with here that has a lack of space? And what can have the most amount of people? I mean, if we really wanna zoom out, is it going to be something that will create affordable homeownership? Or could we look at a program using lodging tax dollars for a subsidy for if there's someone working downtown here that reasonably has no shot at owning a home here now or within the next few years, but they just wanna live here while they're working downtown? Can we use lodging tax, tax dollars to have a subsidy if you're able to score an apartment at the Leavenworth House? Or at the new place that's coming up on Charnstick? That allows you to live downtown, that allows you to live in the area. I think it would be helpful to, if we're really gonna have this conversation, to open up the conversation to all options and see what might benefit best for the most. So in its current nebulous state, I'm not sure about my comfort level pursuing these conversations until we really nail down, these are the dollars.
Well, all I would say, friends, that's the point, is to start a conversation to see if there's even any interest in continuing to get those details.
My, my concern would be that for me to say in a public forum, yes, let's go down this road, that would be implied as, yes, I support this effort full, full cloth. And I, I don't know if I do. So I think that's, I, I think that's, I, I, and have we looked at all the options that this money could go towards, not just this one?
So one of the things I forgot to address earlier when I was making my comment was the fact that there are multiple state organizations that believe that this RCW amendment only applies in King County. And so I would also wanna know, if, if we are gonna pursue this conversation, I would wanna know, are there any other municipalities outside of King County that have pursued this and actually tested this new amendment? Because I would be afraid that we would get into some legal trouble and I don't wanna be in the middle of a lawsuit using, using these funds towards affordable housing. Is there any precedent established with using this amendment at all?
I would, I will just say, I am assuming that if we move forward with this conversation, a lawsuit is inevitable because this is, if we are the first, which I'm assuming we would be, this would be a precedent-setting thing. And I can't imagine that there are a whole lot of groups that would not like to see this be a precedent. So regardless of the legality of it, we should prepare for a lawsuit if we're gonna move forward in this. That's my personal opinion.
I would say that, well, you can just look at it. I don't think that precipitates a lawsuit. I think you just, I think there's some details that need to be answered, like, how's the bond thing work? How much are we talking about? We're, you know, we have a crisis here in housing. And this is plain and simple as it gets, and it's desperate. And if this allows us by just starting the discussion, doesn't mean we go all the way, but we at least explore it. It's well worth the time to look at it and figure it out and go, well, uh, like I said, we have two legal opinions already. And yeah, until we enact it, we're not gonna get sued. If we discuss it and we, we put up boundaries on it and figure out what it is we wanna try and agree on that, I think that's at least worth the time to explore it, not just throw it out. I think it's really worth the time to take a look at, of self, of things. You've got a crisis here that's gonna get worse. You've got a crisis here that's going to get worse. We've been battling with the legislature on, you know. Three, well, this is my third, third set of this and we're, we still, you know. This allows us an option, and I think the money's there that we could borrow from and pay it back. So. I don't think the risk is as high as we're thinking, especially if we're not going to enact it, we're just going to take a look at it. So we can always back, back out. We have an off rent. My, we have an off rent here.
Well, until we have, actually would have even a project, even if we decided to move forward and decide to have some comfort level. That still doesn't set us to commit it to anything until you guys get a real project that says. Wow, we can get this for this. You know, then you, that's when it would come down to. To making a real decision to move forward or not. Um, until then, you know, we can. Have that discussion, but. Um, you know, it, again, it depends on the comfort level to even. To deal with it if we even got to that point where there was a project that could get us some. You know, and I, I guess Clint, my only thing about, you know, subsidizing grants and stuff is that's. A forever thing. If we, if we put this towards getting some. Units that are controlled by not us, but somebody, either the housing authority or men or somebody that would. Steward them for the long term. Then it's not. You know, ongoing, you, you invest one time, you've got this X number of units, whether it's homeownership or rentals. I mean, it could be either one. The, the key here, the one that, that to me is, I mean, I. Been working at trying to get something that allows us to go higher than the eighty percent. But the eighty percent is, and below is still a need, obviously, in this community. Um. My concern is, well, we can, you know, we can talk and talk and talk for blousing and. Until we get some source that we're comfortable working with and using. We're going to still watch it all go by, you know, and we're going to see that forty percent of, you know, second homes grow. And we're going to see. You know, our workforce emptying out of our community. And I mean, that's. That's. My concern is that, you know, and we've got a source that we can use, and it's not robbing Peter to pay Paul. Because. Peter's got the, the vast majority. We, we have not been spending all of our life tax, right? And. You know, there'll, there's, you know, you, you've got to be able to do. You know, pat your head and rub your belly at the same rate. And this is a, this is our primary source of income in this community. It's bigger than our, what we get in our general fund.
So Carl. Just so we're all on the same page. Would you or would you not have the appetite to have a discussion about subsidies in parallel with housing? Because where I'm, I mean, if we're going to have a talk about. About having like a rental subsidy. For folks who live here in town, because where I'm coming from. That, all you said is valid and is going to take years to get this off the ground and get housing prepared and available. For those ten, twelve families who are not going to move because they're going to be locked into that. Because you'll have a rung one. But Leavenworth is still missing rungs two, three, four, five, six, and seven to get to that next, to, to get to that, that, that next rung. If we're looking at best for the most. At least even looking at a subsidy. And if we look at it and we're like, nope, that's no good. If we're at least looking at a subsidy. Then we can help those people that need and want to work and live in town. Now, next year, and. It's best for the most as opposed to benefiting those ten families who once they get into those houses are not going to move.
Yeah, and I, I'm definitely, I'm open to anything that will give us some housing for the folks that are our workforce, right? And in fact. I mean, when, when the. Level of house opened up back there, I had that discussion with them is would they accept the, a city voucher, so to speak? Um, you know, to help subsidize, um, and they were open to that. That, that would work ideally if we had a consistent funding stream that we could apply. Um. But, but. In this context, if that's where we would want to put it and, and do it. Like I said, my concern is only. Keeping us a working community where we. How some of our workforce, not all of them, we're not going to get there. I'm. You know, forget that. But let's not lose them all. That's my, let's not lose them.
Has something changed? I mean, these opinions are from two thousand twenty-three, this is two thousand twenty-five. We hasn't, hasn't passed a legislator. Legislature the past two years. Has something changed while we're talking about this now? Is there something that? Is there something you have in mind? Is there a project coming up? Or something that? Why now? We've been talking about it. It's, it's your, on your agenda, but I'm just curious, why now?
It's because I'm. I've. Beat my head against the wall for a long time trying to not use this. To try to get a new source. Um. And my concern is. That might still. Take us too long. We've got something that we could use to get us a starter. And quite frankly, could help maybe even free up the idea of getting a, a general. Funding stream that allows for that higher level and all of that. It could. It could be the, um. The starter for that.
It's the golden goose, the lodging tax, this lodging tax pool of money, right? We talked about, it comes up a lot. People in town are like, fix the streets, lodging tax, we have lodging tax, lodging tax, lodging. There's. Obviously, there's ways, we became his lodging tax for, for things, right? I foresee. In the next five years. People wanting. The pool. To become a Leavenworth pool versus a PRSA and dip into the lodging tax to pay for a new pool. This is. Saying it's happening, but I perceive that in five years. So now you've got. Housing dipping into the lodging tax, you've got the pool, people want the lodging tax, like, everybody's coming after the lodging tax. So it's just.
The difference is, this one is. The state legislature changed the law in two thousand fifteen to allow. Because they saw the, they saw a nexus. We talked about how critical it is to have a nexus between what your need is and what you're spending and using on.
Yeah.
And there is a nexus between tourist towns and the high cost that they have and the need for housing. So they made that nexus and allowed that use. And that's, that's my argument is this is. We're a mature tourist town. We're not a tourist town that needs to get on the map. We're a town that needs to sustain ourselves on that map. And you need a workforce to do it. And that's, to me, is the next natural step. And I've made that with the Hospitality Association and their lobbyists that are not in favor of any of this. That's my argument to them is this is in support of tourism. This isn't an anti. Tourist thing. This is in support tourism, but you know what happens when housing goes? Mom and pops go too, because they're the next thing. It's the, it's the businesses that then. Disappear after. Because you can't keep a workforce, so then it's the big corporations that come in and buy it up. We had that discussion today too at the. The downtown steering committee. You know, trying to keep this a welcoming community. That's what, you know, people love to come here because it's a community that welcomes them. If we go the route that. The projection of what we've been on for a while, and if we continue on that. You lose that welcoming community and then you're just a resort and you've got an imported workforce completely. And maybe, you know, and for some people, that's fine. So for some people, that's. That's not a problem. That's, that's not the kind of community I want.
Uh, I. I don't really understand why we wouldn't want to just know more. I think the lodging. Bond is, it's our money, right?
Yeah.
We collected, it's our money. And one of the frustrating things on council and, and as resident of Leavenworth is said. You know, we can't use funds that are collected in various ways. Some of these funds are pretty healthy and we can't use them for the things that we really need. And so now we've got potential use of some of these funds. That. Be really nice to know what we can do with it. And I don't understand why we wouldn't want to explore that just to see. And, you know, just, I love analogies, Clint, so I'm going to use yours, back, back into the cars, you know. When you recognize that your car needs replacement at home or your family's grown, you need a minivan. I mean, I don't think that. Saying, I don't want to talk about cars because I might end up with a Maserati. I mean, no, we start talking about cars. That's what you do. You start, you start looking at your options and you look at what, what can I afford? Uh, do I want to lease or do I want to buy? You know, like, what, what, what are all the needs I need? You know, so. So that's what we're talking, I think, right now is just having a discussion about. Cars, having a discussion about. This lodging tax and what are the acceptable uses of the tax? And none of that is committing us to doing any specific. It's actually just opening. The door to what we possibly can use it for. And then we can make an educated decision as a council. On whether we want to do that or not, and we can listen to our constituents and, and come up with a good educated uh, approach. Uh, I would like to do that, um, so we know.
Right.
And that's, I think, is kind of what we should be doing as city council.
I think we have an obligation as a council given this crisis and stabilizing our workforce. That we look, explore every option that comes across to us. And. This is no way commits us. We get an idea of what we can do, can't do. I just, to me, I think this is like, you got two, that, you know, I'm not saying we never would get sued, but we're not. We're not even close to that. We're just going to take a look at this and see how it might work for us. That's all. And that's, I think that's very.
Currently, we can't do it. Right? Currently, we cannot do this. But we cannot proceed this.
Well, you, you could vote to proceed with. Doing it, yes. If we had a project and we were giving it to you and you agreed to do it, yeah.
And so the state's okay, but we can just take this lot, we, we can, it's, it's legal, we can do this.
We can.
That's what the opinions are that were in our package. Not everybody in Washington State believes that.
So this is what we're saying, we're. We can discuss it or not, or that not, that, yeah, the water, can we do it? I don't.
Because maybe having the discussion will, will uh, draw some attention to us. And then those people who maybe are the ones who might sue us. If we enacted something. Would come to us and say, hey, by the way, if you move forward with this, I'm going to sue you. Well, now we have more information, right? So now we're not speculating, we have information. So I think having the discussions. Is good.
Yeah.
There's no negatives to it. If it brings attention.
Hopefully, someone in town doesn't sue us.
Yeah, I'm just curious, what would be the guy that does it for a suit?
Misappropriate misuse, misuse of funds or?
Yeah, that, that is not a proper use of those funds.
Okay.
Yeah, they don't believe that. That this law that says and is interpreted to say. Any jurisdiction that's. Now, if we, you have to have a transit stop, so some communities couldn't do it because they don't have a bus system, but we do. Um. So, yeah, there's. You know, there's.
Any number of hoteliers in town could sue. There's a lot of people that could sue.
And quite frankly.
Into those funds that are not.
Quite frankly, quite frankly, I'll tell you why the other shoe is falling now, and that is because we asked the Attorney General. For his opinion on this. And Senator at the time Hawkins submitted that. It's got to come from a legislator to ask. For that opinion. We asked for it in twenty twenty-three.
So we don't even know if we can.
And well. Then, well, we, we believe that we've got legal standing to do it. We wanted him to give us. The Attorney General's. Opinion as well, to give us, to bolster this argument. Um, and we asked for it in fall of twenty twenty-three. It goes into their system. Or opinions, it works its way through the system. I've been, was in conversation with then Attorney General, um, Bob Ferguson. Um, he doesn't get involved until the very end. He's got a team that processes these and works through them. Um, it was in process. When he was elected governor. Um, he was hopeful that this, the thing would have come down before he left office. Him leaving office didn't. Put a snarl into it. Um, Brad Hawkins' decision not to stay in the Senate. Meant that the person who had petitioned is no longer in the office after the first of the year. So. The Attorney General's policy is to not continue. Giving that. So it was almost ready and done and it would go to the bottom. I will tell you that. I, this past week, met with the new Attorney General and said to me, that was a faulty. Policy decision that they make is that, because the, it's still a valid request and still needs to be addressed. He asked me to send him this stuff and so I did, so there's still hope. That. He would still. Pursue that and not make it go to the bottom of the list again. Well, it. Quite frankly, it wouldn't get, because we don't have a legislator who is willing to ask the Attorney General. Um, that was the other thing. If one of our current legislators would have said, sure, keep it going.
What does that mean? What does that, what's that say?
Well, look at who's saying no.
Yeah, they're just, they're not interested in us using that tax.
You've got Mike Steele, you've got Brian Burnett, and you've got Keith Kater. And you would think that they could at least, it doesn't cost them much, just to say, I'd like you to take a look at this, but they all three failed to promote it. So. I mean, they're all talking about how this is such a crisis, but there was a chance to step up and at least make a minor. Move on this and they all decided not to, where Hawkins was all ready to go with it, so.
And I guess that's what I'm saying. Why is, I mean, it just seems like. What does that say?
It's politics, that's what it says.
Yeah.
So, so what it said is, I'm, I was frustrated with that and I said, you know what? I think we've got good legal standing. Let's just at least bring it up and talk about it. So. MRSCs are statewide group, they deal with all these things. They say. You know, yeah, it's obvious you do. Our. Own attorneys looked at the laws and dissected that. Those two competing pieces said, no, those are independent of each other. This one says you can do it. Does it? It doesn't mean that we can't get sued. You're right. But here's the other thing is, we are a unique. Community. I mean, we've got more lodging tax than. Communities. Twenty, thirty times. We're like. Third, fourth, what was it? Fourth? But a couple of those are counted.
Into state?
Yeah. statewide.
Statewide. So, you know, we're, we're very unique. And so is our crisis for housing, unique. Because. Not many. Towns are this small and have that much pressure on them. Um, that we have. So it's unique both in the revenues that we can get from it, but also the needs that it creates. So. Should we, should we continue giving you information or?
I'd like to see us move ahead. Just at least for a discussion, we're just talking about a discussion.
Yeah.
So, what's that her?
Sharon, I haven't heard from you. What?
Well, coming in late, sorry, I haven't heard everything, but. One thing when I read through this was, what is the consequence of taking this risk? I am not a risk taker and never have been and probably never will be. Um, so I'm kind of on board with Clint and Ann and Travis and Mike. And I think that we should not do anything with it today, maybe bring it back. And so that everybody's comfortable. I, I feel a lot of uncomfortableness. And I think we should be comfortable, but you keep hammering us with the same information. We've heard it from you, so it's not new. And so I feel like we need to move on.
Yeah, we definitely will. Definitely can bring it back. Have more info, maybe, maybe by that time you will hear from the current Attorney General as well.
I think if something, yeah, if something changes like that, I mean. Let's revisit it. Right?
So we do, we don't, we don't, we're not ready as a council to discuss this. Go ahead and discuss it while the Attorney General takes a look at it. I mean, what's wrong with discussing it? I don't quite understand. The risk in discussing it. And getting. The nuts and bolts here. I don't quite.
I'm trying to grasp, like, what is it? What does that even mean? Like, we are discussing it right now, but then. Are we talking about, like, we don't have a project. There's nothing coming to, we're, we're going to vote on it. There's nothing, we're near that, as far as we know. So what is this, what is coming back and discussing it more? Basically, we're just exploring. Whether or not if a project comes up and somebody says. They can't even ask to use it because it doesn't exist, right? So we would have to create a structure. That then somebody could apply to, to use? Is that what we're talking about?
Well, and you're on that housing subcommittee and, you know, they're talking about asking. The community and developers for proposals. What could you do? And. What would it take to do it? So again. In that process, you get, well, we can give you X number of units and it can be permanently affordable or, you know, we're, we're talking about. You know, the. You know, the potential for a cottage housing. Group that would be some affordable and some not, and I mean, there's all kinds of things that if you put up. A request out there and see what comes. Then, yeah, then you might have something concrete, but otherwise, again, it's, it's all theory until you have a project. But what would help is for the Housing Committee to say, there's potential. That we could fund a project, because right now we're looking for things that we really don't have. Other than our two hundred thousand dollar kind of seed money, that's really all we have. To put towards a project.
I think maybe it might be helpful to determine how much money we want to put up for bond. We should get to on, get to an amount on that. So people go, oh, that's what you're talking about. Now, I would see that be part of the discussion.
Yeah, what percentage of lodging tax?
We're not gonna go for the thirty seven. That's, you know, I wouldn't see that, but I'd say we'd go for something. I mean, we'd know what that is, talk about. How that would work and at least come down with some hard numbers that we would consider.
Well, like Selby was saying this morning, that. You know, from the the million dollars we would, would cost us. About what we're spending on our river. Usage issues this year, right? So it's not. Again, I mean, it's not like we're talking about taking a huge chunk out, you know? But again, that's probably. Enough for today, but we can continue, I mean, the the discussion and if you get more information and. You know, if the housing group. Comes up with projects or wants us to take a look. Like I said, I, I just, I just don't wanna see us just continue to watch us slide into. A loss of community without putting some kind of fight up, and here's an opportunity to fight.
Here, I would ask that we move on to utility rates, bypass project tracker. We do that every three months anyway. Because we do have our.
Were there any quick questions on the project path or putting them on?
I'm sure I have some. Where are, where is it? In here, I know.
On the tab D.
Yeah.
Tab D. Yeah, I actually have three, it looks like.
Yes. He's on.
Been here for the utility study.
I can do, I think I can do this one with somebody. I, there's all these like CSKW, I don't even know what half of these people are, who they are.
Okay.
Well, that was kind of strange.
I'm CS. I'm CS. But we can skip it if.
Yeah, I do, I know a couple of.
I can follow up.
Let me see, where the heck is it? Okay, on page ten of fourteen. I was wondering, you know, I see the ADA things going. Is anybody gonna do anything about? If you're at the, in the Methodist church, you look across the street and there's some yellow here and there. And there's no way for anybody to cross without going into the, the street with, there's no. Guide, you know, guidelines or anything for them to do the crossing there, and they park. The, the cars that come there are all squished and parked on top of that stuff, so that nobody can get through. If you. Go in, I was gonna take a picture of it and I didn't get around to it.
Sorry, Sharon, I mean, which one is the Methodist church? Is that the one on Evans?
Yeah. Yeah, and right across the street, Kurt Porter lives here, right there, he has a white fence and across the street. There's no place for anybody to walk unless they're on this side and just go down the sidewalk.
That's not currently included in any of these projects, so that if you're looking at the program, that project, that one's done. And that's actually, the acceptance is on the agenda for tonight. So that area is not gonna be addressed there. We can look at it, but it's not currently included in the project tracker at all.
Okay, so is that, that area then just gonna stay like it is with some yellow here and there, looking like maybe it's a. Place for people to cross? Yeah, I'd like to go and look. It's bothered me for a long time. And let me see. There might be one more here. No, there's not. I'm good.
Okay. Then we'll go on to the next item.
So we will talk about the utility rate discussion, continue that conversation. We do. Okay, so Kevin. Is with HGR, he's involved in doing that quite a bit last year as we're engaging to the, he is on the line. And really, the high level items. I know we have twenty minutes to go over this. I did wanna talk about the monthly rates, so. The questions that we have were looking at specific projects and bringing those rates out over time. And we also really high level wanted to touch on the system development charge. We're gonna have our conversations about all these this year. As we get closer to that, and we'll try to find a steady session where we could have the full time. To really go to this conversation. But I guess maybe we'll just start with the system development charges quickly, just because I think that conversation can be a little bit quicker. And then we can spend the rest of our time when we have the, the monthly rates. Development charges as a reminder, this was what we looked at at the very end of twenty twenty four, right before we actually adopted the rates. And the system development charges are the fees that are paid. By someone when they're connecting to our system, so it's a one-time charge, pay all when they connect to the system. Last year, when we adopted the twenty twenty five rates. We only modified the water system development charge, so. We did quite double those, so close to double the system development charge for water. We did not touch sewer or stormwater. Those, we left the exact same as previously. So for water, if you remember, Kevin provided the allowable maximum for all of those. But if you remember, Kevin provided the legal maximum that we could have on system development charges based on the utility rate study. And then we have the graph or the chart where we looked at, okay, this would be fifty percent, set seventy percent of the maximum. For water, we are at fifty percent of the max allowable. Or sewer, we're at about fifty percent of the max allowable. And stormwater, we're at about seventy percent of the max allowable. So again, this obviously does have impact on development. And it, you know, it does directly impact people as they're. Building an ADA that's over nine hundred square feet with the utilities. But save for any sort of new construction. So again, this is how they quickly reintroduced this topic, that we, we didn't adjust this after. Just the fifty percent last year. So this is some development charges. For one year, you for water. Which is our three-quarter inch meter, and then everything is scaled proportionally off of that size. We're at six thousand six hundred eighty-five dollars for. One three-quarter inch meter actually for the water system. The max allowable is the thirteen thousand three hundred and seventy dollars. And again, when someone comes in and connects. In almost all scenarios, except potentially if they're in the UGA. They're connecting to water, sewer, stormwater, all the same. So. I guess my question to you. Do you even want to look at system development charges this year? Again, as we look at the twenty twenty six rates? Do you want to dig any deeper and consider increasing these?
Or just stormwater and sewer or all?
Or any of them, for water, sewer, or stormwater?
Why, why would, I guess, so, so I see that there's numbers here, there's a maximum allowable, which is set by.
State law.
State law. So, so the, the question is, do we wanna try and get more of that money because we need it? Like, is that the true cost? Like, do we, do we need to collect those funds so that we can manage our infrastructure better? Is that gonna make a big difference for our infrastructure needs? Or is it?
Future, the future stuff.
Is it just because?
He wasn't here for that.
Right.
Oh, now I was only showing this table. Um, but, but this is really only looking at the impact of the system when someone connects.
Yeah.
So, and I'll let Kevin China, if he wants to give more detail on. The need for that, but I think it's more a council decision on how much we want someone to be paid when they connect to the system. Because we don't factor these in for budgeting purposes. I think that's after, yeah, because we can't depend on development where, as our monthly income is very dependable. Right. Uh, but this is more looking at the impact of the system and fortunately charging people. Or ultimately the impact, it's not an impact fee.
Yeah.
But it's something that's.
I just don't like kind of somewhat arbitrary nature of it. Frankly, I mean, how are we supposed to decide, like, what's the right number, you know? Is it, it's like, we're, we're just supposed to guess, like, what's affordable, or, or we don't wanna attract people to develop here because it's so cheap? So we wanna deter that, or we don't wanna price people out of it, and you know, how are all the considerations that we're supposed to use to make a decision here? And I guess that's why I'm, I'm not directing my frustration at you, but, but it's hard to answer that question. I, I think it should be appropriate amount, and what does that mean? So if we discuss it, I think then we try to set some guidelines, and what is, if it's not actually being utilized. To increase the capacity of the system for every time somebody pays a. Pays a fee into it, then what are we, what are we doing with it, you know?
I think Kevin, I'd like to have a chat.
Uh, so, you know, the, the intention of a, a system development charge is, is actually twofold. One is for the incoming connection to pay for existing capacity that's already in the system. You know, because at this point, you know, everybody that's already connected to the system has paid to expand the system, so there's that component. And then there's the future component where, you know, to be able to handle new connections. You know, you'll have to increase your system, so that connection fee goes to help pay for that too. But the, the intention, or the, the, the best reason to have a, you know, a good impact fee is to. Protect your current rate payers from having to subsidize, you know, people coming in that hadn't paid for their capacity. So, you know, this kind of dovetails into the rates question in this, in, in the way that, you know, we gotta pay for this capital somehow. And, you know, it could be through the system development charges. Or it could be through, you know, just increasing rates, or it could be through issuing debt. So, you know, it's kind, that's where the balance kind of lies, and, and I'm not saying that you should do the hundred percent, the maximum allowable. And, you know, a lot of places do consider, you know, how they might be affecting the, the, you know, the development community and. And, you know, not wanting to, you know, scare them off. So those are all considerations, so. You know, consider the current rate payers and how they, you know, that, you know, they might be impacted if. The system development charge isn't high enough to be able to pay for these future projects that, that they could pay for. And the other side of the, the balance is in the development community, you know, not wanting to scare them off.
Kevin, did we have, when we previously showed the SDCs, didn't we have comparisons of. Those around us?
We did.
And, and what, do you recall where, where did we land in comparison? Were we low, medium, high?
Yeah, that's, that's the, that's the one that's up there right now from the previous presentation. So I would say that. Before you changed the water one, you were on the low side. And then after increasing water, you're probably somewhere in the middle.
Not walk everyone. So this was current, this was twenty twenty four, this was the max allowable. And this is just water.
Water and sewer.
Water is, water is.
So the.
Sorry, water.
Water is not.
Water just doubled, sewer stayed the same. Hold out, but I think it's. Nine thousand dollars, roughly nine thousand dollars. These are current. Under rates right now. And this is where Kevin showed, so I don't know if probably you can see this, but. Having heroin actually quit, see, Leo showing. At least when actually water was swimming.
I didn't include stormwater on here because a lot of the places didn't have stormwater SDCs, so just bear that in mind.
So I guess, what, what additional information do you want us to bring on system development charges to help guide you to a decision?
I wonder why we're even talking about it. Besides that, that's our job, but. Why do we need to bring it up? We feel like we're not in the right place because we're not at the max allowable. When you look at all the different jurisdictions that have different pricing. Everybody's unique, so our water supply system, our waste treatment facility, proximity to town, all, all of these things all are different everywhere you go. So what we really should be looking at is what does it cost us to provide the service to our systems? And what is the impact on the system when we have a new connection? And as best we can. Let's match the cost to what we charge. And, and have, we're not, we're not making money off of anybody. They pay what it costs to connect to the scene, and that's what I want. If any way you can show that to me, I'll vote for it all day, every day, that that's what it costs.
So that's what Kevin was explaining, though. It's the previous infrastructure. When you're a new person, all these other people have been paid for the. That you can't just jump in and like. That cost is associated with what's happened in the past, but also what's going to happen in the future, right? I understand.
Right.
So it's not just, and the cost of installing a six-inch pipe, that's not what that is, right? For the infrastructure in the past.
Yeah, and it's complicated, but I mean, that's why we hired consultants to make sense of it. And so that's, that's my ask. My ask is if you explain to me that this is what it costs, this is where your governor should be, not because.
And that we have a gap.
That we have a gap. If we have a gap, if we're not in the right spot, show me that we're not in the right spot, and why? Love to, love to vote on it, talk about it, but I don't care what city of Play Elm charges.
Well, they're an outlier because of the way that they've developed with some KDA.
But for all those reasons, like, I wanna know what it costs here to do that. What do we need to charge our?
Part of this was provided, for example, come up, people would ask like, hey, what do other communities look like? Are we totally out of whack? So that's why Kevin did provide this, because that was the question that's asked.
Yeah. There's no development chart. We have troughs for catching runoff. Yeah, we should be at the max, because we have a lot of. Literally be higher than all of those, because we are an old logging town. We, we literally should be at the max, if you, if you think about it that way.
Yeah, but some people say, I wanna build a house. Town and, and it's not currently developed a lot, so I'm gonna pay a new connection development charge. And so am I gonna say to myself, councilman, yeah, we're gonna charge you a ton because our system's crap. That we, we haven't been maintaining.
Those are the new ones.
You new people are gonna pay to bring us back to speed. Is that, is that fair?
That's why we're discussing it. That's the nuances. You're, you're explaining the argument. That's why, that's the discussion we're having. That's how we figure the number, I think.
Yeah.
And I can tell Kevin's critique too.
Let me just jump in real quick, and you know, you're talking about, you know, what is, you know, how? How do we value, you know, what connection to the system is? And the process to calculate what the maximum allowable fee is, is to actually go back and look at what your current system is. And then find out how much, how many ERUs it can support, and then just do the divide by math. And so that gives us, you know, a unit for an ERU, and then we look at the future. Projects that are expansion related, and then we divide by the, the future new ERUs. So it is a cost-based calculation, just, just so you're clear on that.
And then we have from that, like he's saying, it, it is a policy decision, really, like, how much do you? Do you want to potentially hinder development or not, now that we know the max allowable? So again, with water, the water and sewer being fifty percent of the max, stormwater seventy. Is that, is that a problem to you guys? Would you rather that we do closer to the max and more like the calculated? Percentage?
Well, let's say. If we're at fifty percent now, are we paying, are we generating the funds we need to take care of our infrastructure and build that we need?
No, but that's also not the intent of that, so. No.
There was a reading increase that covers most, majority.
Yeah, so. Yeah, our monthly fees are supposed to cover those costs, it's not this connection fee.
Yeah, so then.
That's it. So, so this does not, this, the tension of the. The development charge is not to help us build stuff, it's just to charge folks.
Well, it, it does help, though, because if, if you think of the whole system. You need X amount of dollars, you're gonna get it from two sources. You need X amount of dollars, you're gonna get it from two sources, those buy-in fees and your monthly fees. And so if you're not getting, you could put your buy-in fees low. It just means you gotta raise the other higher.
Right.
I mean, it's a balancing act, so it is paying for some of that. But, but also, we're also trying to raise our rates enough to also pay for some of that future. So it's, it's both and, but if you don't raise the, uh, the, the buy-in fees, you can keep them low. But then you've gotta raise the other higher, right? Cause you still gotta replace it.
And, and I would just say that, you know, how, how the system development fees fit into the rate study is that. I am directly using those fees to offset capital costs. So as they come in, I've assumed that you're gonna use those to pay for capital.
Hmm, okay, okay.
But, but one more quick thing on that is that. The difficulty with system development fees is that you never know, you can't really forecast when they're gonna come in. I think someone may have already mentioned that earlier, but that's the tricky part is, you know, sometimes they come in, you know, all at once in one year and then they dry up for a couple more years. Just, so that's a little bit, you know, the, the tricky part about system development, development fees and a reason why you can't. You know, rely on those, you know, solely. And, and of course, there is the idea that, you know, you're only supposed to really use those, those fees for expansionary related projects.
What is your opinion, Andy?
What is my opinion?
Yes.
My, my personal opinion is, if you're really asking for it, is that they should be, um. Like looking at the, the fifty percent. I do, I personally think it's low, but, but, but really I'm looking to you, so I don't wanna interject my.
No, but from what you're, you're, yeah, you're, you're the daily, this is your daily, right? This is, you got, yeah.
I think the biggest thing that we hear, cause we've met with a few developers who have come in and said like, hey, these have changed a lot, like this is a big deal, this directly impacts our budget. And I think as we talked through with them, like, honestly, their biggest complaint was just communication. They would rather that we had. Send a letter, like somehow directly communicated with business owners, but once we explained what's going on and why. They felt like it was, they were really receptive of, okay, we understand, we just didn't know that going into it. So now we already have our project budget. We're signing our connection paperwork and we're like, oh my gosh, this is really expensive.
Right.
So I think as long as we're more proactive in our communication, at least from the developers we've met with, we didn't get. Pushback on that, it's more understanding like, yeah, rates are going up, so our system development charges.
Well, and you know, you were talking about, um, housing affordability and I'll just throw, you know, my two cents or what my experience from talking with, uh. Um, developers in relation to that is, is usually when they come in and complain about system development charges. They usually say, well, you know, you're gonna tack that on to the price of a house. And so it's not the developer who's really paying for it, it's the buyer of the home. So, you know, that's what they say, and I sometimes push back up on them and say, well, you know, it's really a market-based rate. Or a market-based cost, but anyway, that's, that's what they normally argue.
Right. Just one thing, um, is that the, the six thousand five hundred nineteen, that's for a three-quarter inch hookup?
Yes, that was.
If there's development charge for it.
Yes, that was.
Yeah, that was not a current.
So it was our current twenty twenty.
Yeah.
More like nine thousand today.
Yeah. And I can pull that actual, though, I know.
So I indicated, Mike, we, we hadn't talked, we weren't gonna increase the, the S D Cs next year.
We had just left it, cause I don't know if you remember, but the, we didn't even start talking about the system development charges until the special meeting, like the second meeting in December.
Okay.
Um. At least the way it was in my head was that we were going to discuss it again in twenty twenty five and look more at what we want that long-term to look like.
Yeah.
Um, water was about twenty-five percent the max. So if you remember, that was the conversation the council had was let's start with water, let's increase water to at least fifty percent and then go from there.
Okay.
So that's why I wanted to bring it back up. Just get your good boy.
And just historically, the S T Cs have been skipped. On rate increases, where we do annual.
Right, we covered that gap, yeah.
S T Cs, I think, have been increased other than this last December one, one other time in a ten-year period.
Yeah.
And it, it, it is that weighing decision. Do we want to encourage development? Well, if we do, then we keep them up. Do we wanna slow down development? Then we raise them up. Before, uh, Leamworth House was built behind Safeway, you had a lot of people in this chambers telling you. Raise the system development charges. You are losing out on revenue. These people are gonna come anyways and they're gonna pay.
Right.
Well, it, we, we missed that boat.
Right.
And we missed that boat with Leamworth Meadows, cause they've already paid too.
Right.
So you, those created opportunities that those residents were in here telling us to do it. We didn't do it, so we did lose that. Now is our future ones to come, absolutely. Eventually, there will be more annexation, we'll be up, you know, then we'll be out the icicle, whichever way we go, there will be more down the line. So eventually you did wanna.
And, and. One thing also to consider here when you talk about this is that you could phase this in over time. It's not like this year you have to say you're gonna go to the maximum. It could be that, you know, you're gonna increase it by, you know, um, you know. Half as much as it should be this year and then a little bit more the next year, basically just over a couple of year periods. Building up to what that maximum is.
Right.
And Kevin, wouldn't the maximum though, over time, continue to grow as well?
Yes, so, um, you are allowed to adjust the, um, your S D C when it's at the maximum allowable. By, um, basically inflation and we generally. Say it's the, you know, um, the E N R C C I, so the Engineering News Record. Construction Cost Index, so you can increase it by whatever that inflation rate is on an annual basis. Some people do it automatically in their code and they say, you know, um, we're just gonna do this every year based on this index and, and it just goes, and it just goes with that.
So I guess the, the goal from my perspective by the end of this year, when we're looking at adopting the twenty-six rates, would just be to have direction from the council, even if we're not. But even if we're gonna increase this year, at least knowing what, what you would want that to look like in the future. And I know looking at historic resolutions, that's how. The utility rate study was adopted, and we could use the same thing specifically with system development charge, so that. We're saying unless, you know, next year the council decides otherwise, this is what we're planning to implement over the next X number of years.
I think that's fair. I'm not, I'm not anti-raising these rates, by the way. I just, I, I'm channeling my air four-year-old. Why, why, why? And, and people ask me, why do we, why do we do that? I wanna go and say we did it because of this.
Yeah.
That's all I ask with you is bring that, or bring a proposal to say this is why I think we need to be at this number. We can back that up and then. I'm in.
And is your preference that I leave it open-ended and ask you what you want, or do you want me to bring a proposal and then you modify?
Bring us a proposal.
Bring you a proposal?
Yep.
Okay. Do you wanna throw out a starting point? Anyone have any thoughts on system develop, development charges or everything?
Well, what are we currently at? We're not at sixty-five hundred dollars anymore.
We're at nine.
I think we landed around fifty for all three, right? Fifty percent?
Yeah, so we're at fifty percent of the total, um, go back.
Yes, sixty percent.
What is that? Other than that? Some of those more than just. Anyway, just. Maybe hasn't come up right here. Um, but so water, we're at fifty percent of the max allowable, so six thousand six hundred and eighty-five dollars. For me. And again, I'm just going off the warning area for the three-quarter inch, two thousand, two thousand potential, please, so long, for sewer. Sewer, we're at two thousand six hundred and twenty dollars. Forty-five cents. And in stormwater, we're at one thousand thirty-four dollars. Forty cents, so.
So we're over ten thousand now.
Yeah.
Total.
Yeah.
Yeah, nine thousand three hundred and five dollars. So, uh.
Well, nine thousand is the total package for the total thing.
Yes.
Right.
Don't we have a more larger sewer?
Yeah, but we, we, we didn't move this, the sewer. We just, it's still at the twenty-four.
It's still at the twenty-four, we didn't touch it.
I know. That adds up to ninety-two hundred dollars in and of itself, and then we add in the. The stormwater, right? With nine thousand dollars.
About one thousand thirty-four dollars, so including stormwater, we're at ten thousand three hundred and thirty-nine dollars. For a single family, just a super development charge.
So we're at the average now. And we're above average if we get Clayelum as the outlier out of there, cause they have very interesting circumstances for that high.
Right.
Connection fee.
A lot of.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Kevin, when you got these comparables, do you know? What their maximum allowances are?
I do not.
Yeah, so essentially we could be looking at Clayelum, Marshall Land, and they could be at fifty percent too.
Right.
We don't know, cause we don't know their system.
Right. Yeah, yeah, yeah. We give you a good feedback? If you want more.
How about I grab something, I'll bring it back to you, rip it up, we can go from there, but I'll be a starting point.
It makes sense, using, you know, we've got a consultant who we're paying to bring expertise and you obviously know more about this stuff than we do, I think, on average in the council. So for you, bring a proposal to us and justify it, go to bat for your proposal, you know, just tell us that. You know, I'm the smart one in the room, so listen to me. And then, and then if we don't like it, like we maybe discuss phasing or something like that, to soften the, the blow, but I, I think. Starting with the expert opinion is the best.
Yeah, give us a starting point.
Yeah. Bring it back to you. Um, that's almost seven here. I thought that we could try to cram system development charge quickly, quickly, but I think we need to, um. Probably just a dedicated study session to utility rates again, just so we can really get into the rest of the monthly rates. And looking at the.
I always concur.
I agree. We have some slots on our agenda left this year for that.
There's some what?
There's some slots on our study session agenda for that.
We'll just move on.
Well, there's, there's.
Not more than five.
Couple of them that are pretty thin to begin with, so.
All right, well, let's take a brief break and.